Thank you and welcome to our Working Cannabis Committee group. I'll go ahead and let everyone introduce themselves. A little housekeeping before we get started. Please silence your phone. If you need to take a call, please take it outside of this building, this room. Restrooms are in the back. The consultants to my right and board members to my left, please raise your hand to be recognized. I'll first start with a pledge of allegiance and then we'll go ahead and introduce the consultants and the board members. Please stand. You place the flag, repeat after me.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. If I could have the consultants to my left, please introduce yourselves.
Good morning, everyone. Good morning, everyone. I'm Ebony J. McGee Anderson.
Good morning, everyone. Tony Forge.
And I'll start over here.
Good morning. Tess? Good morning, everyone. My name is Vaughn Norris, City Manager for the City of Hawthorne.
I'm Greg McLean. I'm the interim planning and community development director for the city.
And I'm Robert Kim. I'm with the City Attorney's Office.
Councilmember Auntie Reyes English and Chair of the Committee.
Sergeant Kenny Gregg, Hawthorne Police Department.
Thank you so much, everyone, and welcome. I'll go ahead and ask the consultants to start with the commercial cannabis regulations, which is up on the screen here. And if you could go ahead, Mrs. Anderson, thank you.
Yes, thank you, Chairwoman Reyes English. I'm Ebony J. McGee and I am the Director of EJMA Planning and Development. We are a boutique land use firm. We tackle a lot of complex land use issues, just like cannabis. So today, we're going to talk to you about cannabis regulation and talk to you about what is happening with the city's cannabis program. Here's an overview of the topics we will be covering today. We will give you a good introduction to Prop 64 and then we'll go into the city legislative timeline that will outline what has happened with the city over the past few years regarding commercial cannabis. And then we'll go into the Let's Talk Cannabis campaign, which is a campaign by the California Department of Public Health around cannabis facts. And then finally, we'll glide right into state regulations for commercial cannabis activities and talk to you all about what's allowed for cannabis operators and what's not allowed for cannabis operators to operate at a commercial level. And then finally, we'll go through the proposed overview of what the city licensing process will look like. And then finally, we'll have a robust section at the end for any questions that you all may have. So we'll jump right in today and get started. I'll turn over to my colleague here, Toni. She is our Community Outreach Manager for the project and Project Manager for all things great in cannabis licensing. So I'll give it to Toni.
Thank you, Ebony. Again, my name is Tony Forge. I'm a cannabis lawyer and also a consultant based out of Los Angeles, California. And what we're going to do is really go over how we got here with cannabis regulation. How did all of this become legal? And it really started in 1996. And that was with, as you can see, the Compassionate Use Act or Prop 215. And basically, this proposition said, look, if you are unfortunately suffering from some debilitating disease, chronic pain, AIDS, glaucoma, you can own and possess cannabis and you can also grow it, and there will be no criminal repercussion. Remember, then and now cannabis is still federally illegal. It's a Schedule I drug under the Controlled Substance Act. And so this was revolutionary back in 1996 because people could get the medicine that they needed without the repercussion of any kind of criminal prosecution against them or their caretaker. So this is where it really started. And then fast forward a couple of years down the line, we have the medical cannabis regulation and safety act in 2015. And this said, look, before cannabis was not for profit, we're going to make it for profit now. And not only are we going to do that, we're going to have some business licensing around cannabis. So the first notion and thought of cannabis licensing and regulations came as a result of this act under the medicinal type of use. And also, it said, look, we're going to create a Bureau of Cannabis Control. And so the notion of for profit, the Bureau of Cannabis Control and all of that really started with MRSA. And then in 2016, we had Prop 64. This was something I'm sure you all voted on. And that proposition said, if you're 21 years older, you'll be able to grow, possess, and use cannabis. It also allows one ounce of flour, eight ounces of concentrate, and up to six mature plants that you can grow. The other thing that was so significant with Prop 64 was it said to the state and localities, you can regulate and you can tax the production, the growing, the manufacturing, and the retail of cannabis, as long as it's for adult use, 21 and over. So that was important with that. It started in 2016. We passed it in 2016, but implementation was not going to take place until 2018. In that time, the state decided to come up with some cannabis business regulations. They have been doing so from 2017 on, even a couple of months ago. And they took a similar approach to what we're doing now. The state went up and down the coast and said, look, these are our proposed regulations for cannabis businesses. People like you had commented on that. They went back to the drawing boards, businesses, organizations. And so we have robust cannabis regulations surrounding the sale and manufacturing and growing of commercial cannabis. And so this is what you can see with Prop 64. The majority voted for it statewide, absolute, almost 60% in Los Angeles County. And this is what we were talking about earlier. We had, MRSA kind of brought both of them together, the medicinal and the adult use. It became law in 2017 and it merged what I was talking about before, what the laws were regarding medicinal use and then the adult use with Prop 64. And also Cannabis Regulation Assembly Bill 133 is basically saying, look, now we have an integrated licensing program and what that entails.
Nick?
And this is what's happening in the City of Hawthorne, just for a timeline. In 2016, you had an interim ordinance that basically said, there's going to be a 45-day moratorium on non-medical marijuana. That would be adult use. And you extended the moratorium by 15 days. And then in 2017, there was a zoning act that said restricted the control and use of non-medical marijuana again. And then in 2020? Am I seeing that? Yeah, November 2020, is the ordinance CC that basically said you could tax commercial cannabis if it came to your city. And what we're doing here today is really having the discussion around what cannabis would look like in the City of Hawthorne. Ebony's going to go in a little bit more detail as the latter part of the presentation regarding what that ordinance looks like, proposed ordinance. We're still at the planning stage. We're still getting your comments and what you're looking to do here in the City of Hawthorne. But that's just how we got here from a city perspective. And this is Measure CC. Again, this is the business tax and how you all voted. Over 61% of you said yes, no, 38. And I like the Let's Talk Cannabis because I think there's so many myths regarding cannabis. And I wanted to have a discussion about what some of those laws and what some of those rules look like in California.
Nick?
So again, for medicinal cannabis, you have to have a doctor recommendation. You must be 18 years or older. For adult use, or you've heard it called recreational use, 21 years or over. Like I said, if you're 21, one ounce of flour, eight ounces of concentrate, six plants. Those are higher for medicinal. It depends on what your recommendation is by your doctor. Usually, it's eight ounces, eight concentrate, and 12 immature plants. You can also use cannabis at a private home, but you cannot smoke, ingest, or use cannabis in public. I know we all see it, but that is not legal. You cannot do so. And if you're renting an apartment or a house, you have got to make sure that is allowed. Your landlord could say, there's no commercial cannabis or no cannabis use here, and he would be within his legal rights or her legal rights to do so. You, oop. That's okay. Okay, so we have the number of plants. You cannot drive or you cannot have a passenger in your car using cannabis or open container of cannabis. Cannabis has to be closed or you have to have it in your trunk. If you've ever been to a dispensary and purchased a cannabis product, there's child protections on them. They're very much sealed. They're very much packaged. And so if you're going to have that in your car, it has to look like that. Other Mythbusters, you cannot consume cannabis in public at restaurants, bars, or hotels. Because cannabis is still federally illegal, you cannot possess or use cannabis on federal lands such as national parks. You cannot take cannabis across state lines. You cannot take cannabis to another state that it's legal. It cannot cross state lines. However, it's been really kind of lax in California as long as you're traveling within the state. You know, people are pretty lax. What are those?
TSA.
TSA, there you go. TSA has been pretty cool about that. And so as long as you're traveling within the state. You cannot smoke cannabis where it's illegal to smoke tobacco. So if you can't smoke tobacco, you can't smoke cannabis. And you cannot smoke or ingest cannabis 1,000 feet from a school, daycare center, youth center where children are present. And again, you cannot ride or drive with an open container of cannabis. I don't know if everybody realizes that when you buy cannabis from a dispensary, it has been tested. There's a whole plethora of tests that the state will have people go through. A distributor does batch testing and will take it to a testing lab here in California. And they have to pass quality assurance tests. And so packaged flower, pre-rolls, topicals, edibles, all of that have to do that. Now, also, the California Department of Public Health also has rules regarding how you can prepare edibles. So that notion of brownies and cakes and all of that, gone. It has to be sustainable. It can't be mixed with dairy products. There's a whole kind of outline of how manufactured products, especially edibles, are prepared. That's why you see a lot of gummies, so they can stay on the shelf. There's also cannabis accessories, pipes, rolling papers, vape, all of that, which you can get in a dispensary. And the merchandise has to be appropriately branded. When you look at dispensary items, they have a seal. It's a CA with a little plant. They also have an acknowledgement of the dosage. If it's multiple dosages, how much dosage. So there's a lot of information, just like you would in a nutritional info packet, like if you're buying bread or something of that nature. That information regarding what's in the cannabis, the cannabis plant, that it's been sealed, it's approved, they'll have sometimes a Prop 64, the cancer kind of, you know, it may cause cancer if you're smoking. But there's all type of protections on the packaging of the product, just as if you would buy anything out of any other store. And then here's the hours of operation. Now, we know people have to have their medicine at particular times, or if you're adult use purchasing. You can only sell cannabis between 6:00 a.m. and 10:00 p.m. In-store sales must be finished at 10:00 p.m. So the notion of midnight, 1, 2, 3 in the morning, absolutely gone. You can only purchase cannabis at a dispensary within these timeframes. And if you're going through non-storefront, which is another word or term for delivery, the deliveries have to return back to the premises, meaning the office, when it's 10:00 p.m. So there's no notion of, again, 2:00 in the clock in the morning, midnight, doing any type of delivery sales. Those sales have to be completed as well at 10:00 p.m. Security plan. It's a very detailed security plan, especially in retail. You have to have security on site. They can be armed or not armed. You're going to have a robust camera system. That's mandated by the state. They even tell you the pixels you have to have, where those cameras have to be located. Lighting is significant. You're going to submit that plan to the state in which the state will sign off on. All of that has to be in order. As you see, you're going to have 24-hour video surveillance. It's going to be points of entry, meaning that there's going to be secured areas within the dispensary that you need some type of mechanism to get in. Only employees can get in that area, not the general public. And so it's going to be limited access. Key card system, in and out. Lighting is very important. And so all of that is going to really make for robust security around any dispensary or non-storefront. Ebony's going to talk about what the data shows so far in terms of crime rates and such. And we're using data from jurisdictions that have had cannabis for a longer period of time than California. And so I'm going to let Ebony kind of explain what the crime rates look like. Is it in fact increased crime rates? And so Ebony? Thank you, Toni.
So a couple of just quick housekeeping items regarding the presentation. We have four dates for this workshop, and so this was the second. So you'll notice at the top right-hand corner of a slide, if anything that came up from the previous workshop of concern or interest to that group, we may have added additional information into the slide presentation. So if you are attending all four, or if you can't make it to all four, you'll see in the right-hand corner of slides that have been added, a little sticker that says new. So you'll know the information that has been changed. The city has been very forthcoming with information and committed to transparency in this process. So we wanted to make sure that we announced that. So if you are following along from workshop to workshop, you'll know which slides are added each time. The presentation is available online and of course, on our news channels. But I just wanted to let you all in the audience, for those of you who attended the first workshop, you may see a few new slides here. And as we go along, we will add information that comes up that the public has expressed interest in. So I just wanted to let you know that. Okay, moving forward, we want to talk about, we wanted to really get into the weeds a little bit about what's been happening throughout the country with cannabis. California was not the first state to allow adult-use cannabis. So we're looking at statistics from those states that have had cannabis adult-use activity for longer. But you know, what we're seeing is despite claims, data is showing that legalized cannabis has not increased some of the crime rates. And so it's important to, when we're looking at these statistics, to look at specifically what they're addressing. And it is violent crime in these statistics. So during the first year of implementation of Amendment 64 in Denver, they experienced a 2.2% decrease in violent crimes. And a lot of the, the police department said that those decreases in crimes related around violence are decreased because a lot of the cannabis crimes are prevented with regulation. And so you're allowing people to operate in a regulated marketplace where violence isn't necessary. So we have some of that data. We welcome you to do your own research, of course, but in Washington State, violent crimes rates decreased by 10% between the dates of 2011 and 2014 when they allowed And again, we see some quotes from the police departments and some of the stakeholders here. And they're saying when businesses are operating in a legal, regulated environment, they don't have to rely on violence to deal with issues that come up in their business. I think it's important to talk about that because when we're talking to cities, Toni and I have done a lot of community outreach around this topic. And it's important for us to understand the difference between allowing uses to come in and regulating them. So we understand cannabis is very complex and everybody has their own, you know, opinion about cannabis use. But what we're talking about today are regulating an industry that exists. So I think it's so important for us to look at it and frame cannabis in the lens of regulation. The state has said, we're allowing cannabis operations. We're allowing these businesses to exist throughout the state. Each city can come up with their own rules for how they will operate, but they are allowed to operate. Right now, every city in California has non-permitted operations. The question for the community and for the cities is how will we regulate those businesses? What happens, and we'll get into it a little bit later in the presentation, is if we don't regulate cannabis, then these operators will continue to operate, but under the radar. And so now, we're using a lot of city resources to, instead of being proactive and regulate these businesses and tell them how they can do their business in a safe and legal way, that we are now chasing them down and using city resources to do enforcement. So we have to look at it, do we want to be proactive and create regulations that help businesses operate to the standards the city wants to see? Or are we reactionary and spend money on enforcement to enforce operators who are not allowed to operate in the city? So the state took this same approach and created the Department of Cannabis Control. Back in the original regulations, the department that was created was called the Bureau of Cannabis Control. But recently, they have consolidated. The governor has consolidated all of those independent agencies and programs into one umbrella called the Department of Cannabis Control. I put this in the presentation now because it's important when you're doing some research, and I encourage all of you to do that. You're going to see these agencies that are now under this bigger umbrella. So just keep that in mind when you're looking at things online. You may see something called CAL cannabis, which is the program for licensing under the California Department of Food and Agriculture, who once oversaw cannabis cultivation licensing. You may see things around manufacturing from the California Department of Public Health because prior to the consolidation, that department was over-licensing for manufacturing. And then of course, the Bureau of Cannabis Control oversaw licensing for distribution, retail activities, and testing. So it's important just to note that as you're doing your research and sometimes you'll hear, you'll hear when you're talking about cannabis, those, all of those agencies may be used interchangeably. But this is a great slide to outline which agency oversaw licensing for which activities, which we'll get into a little bit further in the presentation. The first use we'll talk about is cultivation licensing. Cultivation is considered any activity involving the planting, growing, harvesting, or drying, or curing, grading, or trimming of cannabis. So like any other agricultural crop, any of those activities around growing that crop, maintaining that crop, harvesting that crop, is considered cultivation activity. And you are required to have a license from the state and some type of license or permit from the city in which you are doing this operation. Cultivation has both small, medium, and large operations, and we'll see that shortly. But it's important to note that the size of your cannabis operation is directly tied to the type of licensing, the type of license at the state you have to acquire. So depending on what you're doing in your business operation will determine the size of the license that you have to get and also the price. So bigger operators are paying a heftier fee for their operations than smaller, more boutique, or what we call specialty cottage cultivation cultivators. So there are several cultivation license types at the state, and I won't go through all of them because there are quite a few. And again, if you're an operator looking to operate, know that you are going to have to be very specific about your cannabis activities when you are looking for licensing at the state level. They will ask a lot of questions. The application is very robust. So they will ask your canopy, meaning how many plants you have and how big those mature plants are going to be, where they're going, how you're watering them, your nutrients. They're asking for a lot of things to determine your cultivation practices. But the first cultivation site we'll see and we'll talk mostly about in the Los Angeles region is indoor cultivation. You're going to see more outdoor in bigger counties or areas, agricultural counties like Riverside County, or in Northern California where there is a lot of outdoor space. That's where you're generally going to see those larger outdoor grows. But this is, these are some photos of indoor cultivation. This is what it looks like. We like to put them in the presentation because sometimes we have community members who have never seen a cultivation site. I know I never had before. And so these usually are existing in warehouses somewhere in the city. And that's how they would continue to operate, is an indoor facility with all lights as their, as their source of, as their source of light would be some type of, like light bulbs. Some use LED, some use our traditional lights. But any kind of indoor situation is called indoor cultivation. Various grow methods, but all indoors. Outdoor cultivation is just what it sounds like, cultivation happening outdoors. Again, in most cities, there are not a lot of spaces to do this kind of operation. It takes quite a few acres and it's outdoors. A lot of cities, when they're thinking about outdoor, they're thinking about their agricultural properties that are already zoned for this type of activity, outdoor cultivation of some sort. But this is what it looks like if you were in outdoor cultivation, a small farm, medium or large. You can get those licenses indoor or outdoor. The next cultivation type is called mixed light. And again, that's just what it sounds like. So you're going to have a mix of artificial lights, like using lamps, and then you're going to have also direct sunlight. And a lot of times, how that's achieved is through something that looks very familiar to us, a greenhouse. So that, those are the three major types of cultivation. We have indoor, which you'll see mostly in some type of large warehouse. You're going to see outdoor, mostly on agricultural property, or in agricultural areas or large properties. And then you're going to see mixed light, which is a combination of the two, and it can be done in a greenhouse setting. The next license type is manufacturing. The manufacturing process varies from product to product for cannabis, but you're going to hear terms like cannabis and cannabis products. Cannabis products are those things that are made from the cannabis plant but are not flour. For example, there are a lot of things that we're looking, a lot of the products for medicinal use. For example, topicals, tinctures, edibles, all of those things are manufactured. And anyone doing any type of manufacturing absolutely needs a license. Some of the manufacturing or extraction process is used for cultivation and other types of manufacturing. For example, perfumes or essential oils, they use some of the same extraction process, but it does use some hazardous materials such as butane or propane. Those things are regulated by the fire department in normal circumstances, but in an unregulated market, there's no one or no agency overseeing unlicensed operators in their manufacturing. So what happens is it creates a very unsafe process. The manufacturing process can be very safe. We use it all the time with essential oils and perfumes and other regulated businesses. But if we allow cannabis operators not to have regulations, then we're looking at having operations out in our communities that are not being monitored by the fire department. Now, we, there's a lot of operators I know that will say, hey, we've been doing this for a long time. It's really safe. But you don't know who is going to be operating because you're not regulating them. So it's really important to, again, when we're talking about cannabis, look at it from the frame, the framework of regulation and making sure it's safe. This is the picture of a manufacturing lab for cannabis. It looks like a lot of other commercial, food-grade, commercial kitchens. I like to show pictures of operations because again, sometimes community members have never seen what it looks like. So it's important to show that they are still following a lot of the medical-grade requirements for producing any type of cannabis products. And the state does oversee this, including, as Toni mentioned earlier, a lot of testing. There is a large panel of tests that have to happen for all There is a large panel of tests that have to happen for all cannabis products that are sold in the regulated market. The next one is distribution. I like to go through distribution a little bit because we have a lot of misconception about what's distribution versus delivery. So distribution, think wholesale. It is business to business. It is not business to customer, or consumer. So retailers are only allowed to buy commercial cannabis products from a licensed distributor. So that's very important to note. There is both first and third-party distribution. So if I have a product that I am creating, for example, if I'm a cultivator and I want to sell my product directly to a retailer without a third-party distributor, I can do that, but I, I need an additional license at the state to do that. If you want to be a distributor and own, and not produce your products, but buy them from a manufacturer or cultivator, and then sell them to a retailer, third-party, you can do that with a distrib-, a third-party distribution license at the state. And here is an image of a distribution warehouse. Yes, those boxes do have cannabis in them. It looks like any other warehouse or logistics business in the city. And this is not in your city, but this is a licensed operation, but you can see, it looks a lot like Amazon. Everything, the state requires everything to be packaged. Everything is tracked by the state from seed to sell. So, all of these packages are logged in a database the industry fondly knows as metric. And the state literally tracks every single step of this process and every single transaction. So if you miss one of your requirements along the way, the state definitely flags you. So it's really important to keep in mind that the state is overseeing this process very, with a very critical eye. And the next two license types are testing labs, which are really important. We do not have enough of them in the state. You have to be accredited by an accredit-, accrediting, accrediting body that is independent from all other persons involved in commercial cannabis activities, which means you cannot hold a testing license and any other commercial cannabis license. The moment that you have it become a testing licensee, you are in, you are ineligible for applying for any other license type. And the state is very, very strict about this because they want to make sure that the testing is unbiased, and they want to make sure that the test, the testing facilities are accredited by bodies that would accredit, that would accredit any other kind of, you know, food-grade or commercial-grade, consumption-grade activities. And then finally, there's our favorite, which is retail, and we'll talk a little bit about retail. Tony gave you an overview of what retailers are allowed to sell. But I, I think it's important to note that the licensed retailers that you're seeing under Prop 64 are very different than the facilities that we saw under Prop 215. So if you've ever driven by and saw that big green cross and it's a medicinal dispensary, we had a lot of them, I know, growing up in, in Southern California in the late 90s, early 2000s. We saw them everywhere in Los Angeles. Those facilities do have, do have to have a license now too, and so they've gone through, they've gone through this process if they want to be a licensed retailer. It is required, but as I said, there are a lot, I'm sure you all have seen over the county and other places that haven't gone through a licensing process, they still exist. I don't think it's any secret that there is a competing unregulated market, but that's the purpose of these regulations, is trying to pull all of those operators and give them an opportunity to get licensed and comply with state and local regulations. But retail includes any sale and delivery of cannabis. So only licensed retailers can sell cannabis to consumers. There's a lot of, you know, misinformation about that. You have to have a license at the state and the local level to sell cannabis to consumers. There's no exceptions to that. There are no medical exceptions to that. We used to have the compassion program where your, I think Tony talked about this with folks with, with terminal illnesses, they could have caregivers and co-ops and all of these things under 215. All of that went away with, with 64. So you have to have a license. There are two different types of licenses, I just want to point out. At the state level, we have a storefront, which is a store, and they are allowed to do delivery as well with that license. But there is also a standalone delivery license that is not a storefront, meaning it's not open to the public, but you can run delivery sales using an online platform. Again, regulated by the state. This is all regulated by the state. But you can just have delivery licenses, so no storefronts, or you can have a storefront retail license where you have customers being able to walk in and, and purchase cannabis. I like to put the pictures up again so you can see some of the design elements. The state has, again, a lot of requirements for security, so when you're building out these facilities, you really have to be careful about, mindful of the design because there's a lot of security regulations and other regulations that prevent what we saw with 215. And then finally, there's a micro-business license. We don't see it as much now, but in the early stages of Prop 64, we, we saw a lot of small craft farmers wanting to have an integrated license type, but have a smaller footprint. So the state created this micro-business license. You have to, you have to be doing at least three of the activities, and you are limited with your cultivation space. So, you don't see a ton of micro businesses, but there are some businesses that have that kind of already built-in integrated license. What we're seeing more now in the industry is having multiple licenses, so you have a fully integrated with separate licenses. But there is a micro-business that has one fee that allows you to do three, you know, three or more activities, but you, you're limited in your footprint. Now we're gonna go into the overview of state licensing and local permitting. There is, I put a link here, and we'll post all of this on the website, of course, to the state licensing applications. We won't get into that today, but I wanted to make sure we had it because I want everyone to have it at their fingertip to see all of the things that are required to get a license in California. It is very, very robust. So we're not looking at operators who, you know, who are just coming into the industry and they're not really sure what to do. A lot of the operators that you're gonna see that are able to secure these licenses are able to produce all of these documents and requirements and facility requirements that the state needs just to license you. And we, we haven't even talked about what this local permitting process looks like, but just at the state level, there are so many requirements to make sure that operators are in compliance, but also making sure that their facilities are safe and that they're operating in, in, in a safe way. Okay, so this, this slide helps you understand graphically the difference between the state license types and the local license types. So at the state level, we have various cultivation types and numbers under these four categories of specialty, small, medium, large, nursery. And then there's subcategories there within. We have two different types of manufacturing. We have testing and retail, and different types of retail, and distribution, and different types of distribution. But at the city level, it's a little more simplified with the ordinance. You, the city has to decide which activities they're gonna allow. So there's testing and distribution and retail and manufacturing and cultivation as an umbrella, and then the city ordinance will tell you how you can operate each of those So at the state level, you may have multiple licenses, but at the city level, you're likely gonna have one license or permit that allows you to do certain activities. This is a slide that shows all of the, the, the cities and areas within the overall greater county of Los Angeles that are, that are allowing some type of cannabis activity, meaning they're regulating at least one business type. And you can see there's quite a few cities, I believe there's over 20 now. This next slide shows you a list of all of the cities who have adopted some type of regulatory framework for commercial cannabis within their city. So we have a vast variety of cities. We have an island like Avalon. We have small, tiny little cities like Bell or Cudahy. We have large cities like Long Beach and Los Angeles. We even have Malibu and West Hollywood and Santa Monica. There are a lot of cities in California taking on regulation for the very reason that we're gonna explain right now. When you look at that map, you can see a lot of areas are regulating cannabis. So what happens if you're regulating something and you have operators, you know, who aren't gonna comply, who don't want to do licensing, where are they gonna go? They're gonna go to cities that are not regulating. So, by regulating cannabis, you're actually getting a control of that mark, of the unlicensed market. And so, it's really important to note that because that's why these cities are really supporting cannabis regulation. Also, I don't think it's any secret that it's an economic development initiative in a lot of cities. If you're gonna allow cannabis operators to come in, they are more than willing to work with city and be community partners because a lot of operators really do want to be licensed, and they really advocate it for licensing. So this gives them an opportunity to do their business in a, in a legal framework. I wanna just, I'll take a couple moments to go through a couple of things that I find important to note about licensing, especially with retail. We always hear from community members, you know, that they're concerned about what they're gonna look like, especially from 215. We all remember those, those dispensaries that were, you know, had some shady characters lurking around. They're kinda dark. Well, not for the commercial market. So when operators are allowed to get licenses and permits, they, you're gonna see the same quality of development that you would any other retail store because they are still held to those same requirements. If you don't allow regulation, there are no design requirements for them because they're not coming in for licensing. This is Gorilla RX, it's on Crenshaw. So this is, this is in the city of Los Angeles, south-central LA, and this is a social equity license retailer, which means that they went through, the operator went through the social, the city of Los Angeles Social Equity Program, meaning that she was disproportionately affected by the war on drugs, like many communities of color have been, and was able to get expedited licensing at the city and the state. This is her retail store. It does not look like anything that we've seen in 215. You can see she's complied with all building requirements, fire requirements, and it's a beautiful store. The next thing that's important to note, as Tony mentioned, the packaging requirements at the state, you know, are very, very specific about what you can and cannot put on your packaging. So you can see all the packaging within the store. It looks very professional, it's very educational. You have to say the dosage. You know, back in the 215 days, you know, you might show up to a dispensary and get a POG-type container full of flour, and you have no idea how to dose that. You might get some other products and you're not sure how to dose it. The state now requires that dosage, dosage be on any manufactured products. Like, like Tony mentioned, there are warning labels, there's a batch number, so you can literally go back and figure out what happened from seed to sell. All of this is tracked information. You can look at your quality assurance tests and compliance tests. There's a lot of things that you can, a lot of information that you can get now from your, your product labels that you weren't able to do with 215. And again, this is just another picture of a lot of the packaging, so you can, you know what to expect when we're looking at retail. The next facility is Kalma. This is one in West Hollywood. We've had a lot of discussion at the Working Committee about West Hollywood. They are one of the model cities for doing cannabis right, especially when we talk about design elements. So, West Hollywood did an excellent job requiring operators to come in with very specific design plans and renderings and elevations, different things that you normally would ask for any major development. And so, West Hollywood said, "Hey, if we're gonna do cannabis, we want to make sure it fits in with the aesthetic of our city, and we're gonna create design guidelines around that." So it's really important to make note of that, that the city does have control of determining what these operators' facilities look like. And again, this is the inside of Kalma. You can see there, this is a probably several million-dollar build-out. It's not what, you know, the green cross that we saw in 215. It looks like an Apple Store. That's the, that's the level of design professionalism that's coming with these stores. Finally, we'll quickly go through the licensing process and talk a little bit about that, and then we'll talk about overall what, what we want to see for the city. So I thought it was important to add this slide based on some of the things, the comments that came up from our last workshop, so I wanted to make sure everybody understood the difference between statutes, regulations, and ordinances. So statutes are laws that are written and passed by the legislator and signed into law by the governor. So that's how the governor was able to consolidate all of the agencies. Was it 2020 or 20, I think it got pushed back from COVID, so it turned to 2021. Regulations are created by agencies, so it's the agency's rules. And then ordinance are created by cities and counties to have even more specific guides or rules and requirements. So when you're looking to be an operator in any city, remember that you're going to have your, your statutes, which are your laws, that tells you all the things that you can and cannot do. For example, the statute might say you have to have a security plan, but it doesn't tell you when you have to turn it in, what has to be part of it. So you're gonna have regulations that are written by agencies that tell you all of those things. What needs to be part of this plan to get the license? And then your ordinances, your, your city or county restrictions may even be more restrictive than what the state is asking. For example, the state might say you need 24-hour security, but they don't tell you if they need to be armed or not armed. The, the city can say you have to have armed security 24 hours a day, or you need to have armed security while you're operating. Those kinds of specific, specific guidelines on operations or mandates for, for operations come at the city level. So, just note that. You can design your cannabis program to mirror whatever values or important things that are happening in your city, things that you value, you can write those into the policies. And this is a, a guide, if you will, of generally how this process is gonna work. We are at the very, very beginning. We are at the infancy of the program at the city. It was just, as Tony mentioned, 2021, where the city council has created a working committee to talk about cannabis and how we're gonna move forward. The committee meets every other week, so we are all very dedicated to trying to get this process right. We understand, the city staff understands, we understand that this is a very complex issue, particularly in our communities, and we need to take it very slowly to make sure that we get it right. The city is very committed to transparency and making sure that the community is involved, which is why we are here and why we are having four different workshops, because we really want to make sure that we gather all the information from the community and anything that is of concern, that we address it through the ordinance. So the first part of the process is community outreach, which is what we are doing in these meetings. And the next part of the, the phase of the process will be that ordinance development. So the state has already allowed cannabis, commercial cannabis to happen. We're not looking at whether or not commercial cannabis operators can exist, because they can. The issue is how, right? How will they exist and, and where? So we're looking at zoning, we're looking at operational requirements beyond what the state is asking, and some community benefits as well. The next part of the process will be when the city council forms the Oversight Committee. The Oversight Committee will oversee the licensing process, and I'll turn it over to the city attorney to talk more about that. But I think it's important to note that the Oversight Committee will be the one that's really overseeing this process and keeping, being the watchdog to the process to make sure we keep that level of transparency and integrity that the city is committed to. Robert, did you have anything to add to that?
Sure, thank you. On this matrix box that we see here, only change that I would add is that right after the Oversight Committee and before the application process, there will, can you hear?
Yes.
There will be another committee, and that committee will be the Licensing Committee. So, the Licensing Committee would go through your application process and make recommendations to city council. All, any decisions of either the Working Committee, or the Oversight Committee, or the Licensing Committee, including the final issuance of the license, will be determined by city will be determined by city council by majority of the vote. I just want you to know that. And the Oversight Committee is a committee that would, basically, the Working Committee, once we form the ordinance and make recommendations to city council, it would be passed down and we would create a permitting process. But the Oversight Committee would continue to exist and make sure that there's no improper activity in issuing the license or anything of that nature. So these two committees, Oversight Committee and the Licensing Committee, is yet to be formed. But what the mayor has done in previous city council has selected each of the council members to sit on as a chair for each of these committees. So the Working Committee is Councilwoman Reyes English here today. But the Licensing Committee and the Oversight Committee will also be chaired by other members of the city council.
Thank you so much. Just like our first meeting, I'm going to take a five-minute break so that we could use the restroom and get ourselves together before we start off to the question Q and A session. So give us about five minutes and we'll come right back. Provided three-by-five cards in the back. If anybody has a card and would like to have that retrieved so that we could read your question, we could do that too. However, at this time, if you have any questions, I ask that you come to the mic and you have two minutes for your question, and we will have a response for you.
Hi, good morning. With all due respect, I was wondering if I could get a little bit more because in regards of timing, I noticed that there's an attorney for weed, there's an attorney for the city to protect the city officials, but there's no attorney to represent the residents of the city. You know, I was wondering if I could just do a little bit. I'm not an attorney myself, but I'm going to do at least to shed a little bit more light on the situation because I did take the initiative to call certain areas like Salem, Oregon. I know Oregon has been talked about many times, what's going on with the, how they started and how their community ended. And as you can see, there's really no representation when it comes to attorneys to represent the most vulnerable, which is the residents of the city. And right now, one thing that they're not, I looked at the, it's the same blueprint what they used in Salem, pretty much same thing. One thing that they don't mention, and all the time that's not being mentioned, is the enforcement behind this. All the Mythbusters and all that, it's not a thing. The enforcement behind this, there isn't any. There's not any over there. There's not any over here in California. And that was pre-COVID. That was what I was told when I talked to the sergeant of police out in Salem, Oregon. That was, now is the Wild, Wild West over there. Same thing right here. Everything, their schools got an abundance of marijuana in their high schools, all the way down to elementaries. Right now, as I was coming in, for example, I was going to park in the background. There are already two cars smoking weed back there. On the other side, you have kids playing in the playground. Where's the enforcement behind that? It's going to fall back down to our police department. And we don't have the manpower. As you recall, people were, last year, were over there talking about defunding the police. What we need to do and focus on is enforcement. We need a special unit. If you're going to bring this into our communities, and that's the way it started. It started with one in those areas, ended up with three, did a lot of destruction for the children, for the city officials, for the whole community. And what happens is that, yes, it's true. I know they mentioned that this brings a lot of money. It does. It brings millions of dollars, but it only brings it to corrupt politicians and to the dispensaries. That's pretty much it. Everything else, everybody has to fend for themselves like we have been for the past years.
Thank you for your time. Your two minutes is up.
Thank you.
So let me address some of the points that you have raised. For the city of Hawthorne, there is, of course, the police department. An ordinance, most of the ordinance are, either can be an infraction or administrative, or it can be a misdemeanor crime. So in terms of enforcement, any ordinance can be enforced by the Hawthorne Police Department or the code enforcement. So we don't need to create a special enforcement unit for purpose of cannabis business if it's allowed by city council, okay? But in addition to that, in terms of corrupt politician, money going to corrupt politicians, this will be regulated as 5% tax. So tax and sales tax for the city. And the rest of the tax for cannabis business goes to the state. Tax is not something that a politician can easily, you know, take it for their personal use. It's like any tax. That's to say that if you have any regular market or a store, the money that's generated that goes to the city due to sales tax will be grabbed by the politicians. I don't know what you base that on, but the city would generate revenue through the 5% sales tax that was passed through Measure CC or through the sales tax or both of them. But in terms of enforcement, for, it's a different situation for very large cities. It'll be very, and you have thousands, let's say, of retail business in cannabis. That will be more difficult to enforce and you may need a special unit. But we're talking about a city with six square miles. The enforcement that we have through the Hawthorne Police and code enforcement should be sufficient.
Thank you. Next? Thank you. You have two minutes.
Yes, good afternoon or good morning. Lili Fernandez here. Mine's is just a little simpler. I've heard that there's a lot of laws, California allowed this, this law passed for this. Just because it's okay doesn't mean it's right. However, I'd like to get more information on, let's just say, the science on the cannabis, right? The science of the benefits of cannabis is limited. But do we have any, any search or any studies of the AMA, what the AMA is thinking about this with public health? Do we have any information on that? Is the AMA for it? Are they against it? Because I believe our public health here right now is what we are really concerned about. Thank you.
That's a great question.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for your question. I actually was going to hand it off to you just for the simple fact that you talked about the county. Is this on? You talked about the county just recently passing a resolution, I believe. If you could just elaborate on that.
Oh, okay. That just happened maybe two weeks ago, that the county of Los Angeles decided to regulate cannabis. They're looking towards around 100 licenses, but that's what's going on on the county. Before, it was banned. And so now the county is going to have that. It's probably going to take six months to a year, even longer, but that's where the county is going. And if you want more information, because cannabis, again, is federally illegal, they don't really have the grant money and such to do a lot of studies on cannabis. However, the country that is really doing a lot of studies is Israel. And so if you would Google about Israel and cannabis and what they're doing, they have a lot of medicinal information. Also, Montel Williams, the ex-host, remember the Montel Williams Show? He's sponsoring cannabis studies as well. So you can Google about him taking his own money and doing a lot of cannabis research because he has MS and a lot of debilitating conditions and he has used cannabis personally. And he feels that the medicinal factor of cannabis, he's an advocate for medicinal, not really adult use, but he really advocates that. So I would encourage you to Google what's happening internationally. International, they do a ton of study and work. Here, we have only licensed one cannabis product for seizures that the FDA has approved. There has been one. And so you can Google that and find out more information on that. But for general cannabis studies, you're going to have to go with Israel, what's happening internationally. Montel Williams is, has a lot of information on that, so you can go there.
I also just want to touch on what the county health department is doing. So the state health department is very much involved in cannabis and cannabis enforcement. And so if you really want to see what the state is doing, you can even follow their Instagram. They have been very transparent about seizing illegal cannabis, shutting down illegal cannabis operations. They post regularly about the enforcement efforts. There is an entire enforcement team from multiple agencies, including the tax agencies, that are not only regulating cannabis businesses and taxing cannabis businesses, but also enforcing those regulations with a heavy, heavy hand in California. Also, just a couple other things just to note. The state budget actually has authorized some funds for, or the DCC is actually funding some grants for more cannabis research. So some of those grants went to the University of California Davis, UCLA. Some of the big medical, the medical agencies right now that we know and trust for medical studies, they are conducting cannabis research. So I encourage you to follow some of those studies because they are funded by the state and some of that money is coming from state cannabis taxes. So it's important to know that a lot of universities are starting to look at this. So check there. And then also our county health department, actually, the county of LA was one of the first municipalities to start talking about cannabis and cannabis regulations early in 2017, 2018. Still, we haven't seen an ordinance come forward until more recently. We've seen some drafts of that. But the county health department does have an ordinance for reviewing these cannabis plans. So for all of the facilities in the county, any incorporated city can actually contract with your public health department, just like you do for restaurants, and they will also have another layer of enforcement for cannabis operators. So I just wanted to bring that out as well.
One thing, one point I have, these are annual licenses. So how you behave in year one impacts year two. So I didn't want people to think that one license goes on in perpetuity. No. So these are annual licenses, so it makes sense to be on your best behavior locally and statewide in order for you to apply and get your license the next year.
Thank you so much, EJMA, and everyone here that is participating, including you, the audience and stakeholders. I also want to thank Channel 22 for bringing this to our residents that are watching from home. The next cannabis outreach meeting, we have two. One would be, again, March 12th at 3:00 PM, and the last one would be March 30th at, I believe that's what? 6:00 PM. If there's anything further, I'm going to go ahead and adjourn this meeting of the Cannabis Working Committee. Thank you to our board members, again, to our consultants, and for the audience participation. The time now is 12:15. Have a great day.